Good morning, welcome to the June 2nd, 2020 public hearing, public meeting of the New York City Marx Preservation Commission, poll roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Shamir Aaron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire. Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Luttrell.
Here.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the June 2nd public hearing and public meeting. Today's hearing and meeting will be held via Zoom webinar. The hearing will still be livestreamed on YouTube, and anyone who wishes to watch the hearing should do so on YouTube. Anyone who wishes to testify on a hearing item should join the Zoom webinar at the estimated time listed on our agenda. We will display the webinar ID and password information and the phone number on our slides at the beginning of the item and at the beginning of the period at which we take public testimony, and we welcome full participation. And so with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to start the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We're going to start today's Preservation Department Agenda with a public meeting item. Item number one, LPC 20-07474, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block 605, lot 31, and 7501. 657 Greenwich Street, AKA 653 to 677 Greenwich Street, 132 to 144 Christopher Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. A federal-style church building built in 1821 to 1822, and a federal-style rowhouse built in 1825 to 26, and last, a school building designed by Thomas M. Bell and built in in 1955. The application is to alter a fence, and this was last presented at the public hearing of April 28, 2020. No action was taken at that time.
Commissioners will note that staff will be presenting, and you may proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners, James Rucielo, Preservation Staff. The application concerns a stretch of nine-foot, a stretch of nine-foot-tall chain-link fence along the Christopher Street between Hudson and Greenwich Streets and the Greenwich Village Historic District extension. The applicants explain that the fence lines a busy street in his opposite, a path station, and that encloses a playground that serves St. Luke's School with students from the kindergarten through eighth grade. At some point in the past, a mesh screen was originally attached by the school to the inboard side of the chain-link fence to prevent passersby from passing through dangerous items through the fence. The mesh screen was replaced with the present temporary PVC vinyl screen when the extension was installed. Here, you see it. The proposal was first presented on April 28, 2020. The proposal was initially presented consisted of making the permanent a 40-foot-wide, three-foot-tall chain-link fence extension atop the existing fence, and that's this section here. That had previously approved and installed pursuant to a temporary permit related to the installation of a basketball backboard and legalizing the installation of opaque, and the applicants had also requested the installation of an opaque ivy-printed vinyl screen applied to the exterior of the fence. Commissioners supported the fence extension but had concerns about the vinyl cladding. The majority of the commissioners believed the vinyl to be too bright and too opaque, and recommended that the applicants explore more translucent, neutral-toned mesh mounted on the inboard side of the chain-link fence. The applicants have returned with a new design. They are proposing to attach a translucent, neutral green mesh to the inboard side of the chain-link fence. The new mesh will result in 80% view blockage, so that on either side of the fence, figures in action can be seen but faces cannot. The ivy-printed pattern will be printed only on the inboard side facing the playground. The applicants are further proposing to install the new mesh at a consistent six-foot height, as you can see rendered here. There are three sign panels bolted to the crossbar of the fence. They are removable, they advertise church schedule programming, and they were there at time of designation. Signee Nielsen and Matthew of Matthews Nielsen and Martha Despian of Matthews Nielsen are also available on this call. And there's a material sample below, if you can see this on the fourth slide. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions for James or the applicant team? Please raise your hand if you have a question. I think that James summarized the commission's discussion very accurately and thoroughly, and as he said, the commission was comfortable with the raising the height of the chain-link fence in that one portion, but not comfortable with the opacity and the print on the, on this screen. And so they have proposed a revised screen that is uniform in height and, and has some translucency, so that you can see the activity behind it without seeing the children's faces. So I, I think this has been very responsive. Commissioner Gustafson, I see you have a question, so please go ahead.
In the materials, it suggested that there was a, they wanted approval for either a six or, I think it was an eight-foot screen, and now in the presentation, they said six. So which is it?
James, can you clarify?
Thank you, Commissioner Gustafson. So in the rendering, you can see that they're, they're proposing, the rendering is showing six feet. The original proposal was at eight feet, and then it extended the full 13 feet of the proposal. So I believe we're commenting on six-feet mesh screen.
Yeah, I was just looking at the bottom on the right side of that, the bullets there, the bottom one says eight-foot or six-foot height options. And so I, I just wanted to know whether they were foregoing the eight-foot height option. See on the lower right list, the bottom.
I, I did speak with a member of the applicant team, and I understand that the school is comfortable with accepting the six-foot option to respond to the Commissioner comments.
Okay.
They would like, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I think that, Commissioner Chapin, please go ahead. Commissioner Chapin, did you have a question?
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize it wasn't unmuted yet. James, do you, is, I just wanted you to verify that the screen is somewhat more transparent, and just ask the question regarding which side the ivy, the ivy is on the inside, and I don't know what other commissioners would feel as to whether it might be less obtrusive, I guess, if you cannot see the ivy pattern on the, which side would appear best from what you, you saw, but as far as the street view.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapin. If I could just clarify, so as I understand it, it's a little difficult with virtual presentations, because I believe the material sample just arrived in the mail to the applicant's office probably this week, and they quickly photographed it and put it into the presentation.
Okay.
But as originally presented, it was a PVC vinyl screen, and they laid it on both sides of the chain-link fence. So that was really to obscure transparency there. Currently, they have it on the inboard side of the fence, and the printed screen is facing the basketball court, where some type of mesh design is facing the basketball court, and that is not going to be visible from the sidewalk as they've rendered it in this image in front of you. And it, as you're standing, it obscures about 80%.
Thank you.
So there's 20% translucency, and at the last hearing, a number of commissioners had concerns about the pattern of the print, and so the applicants have presented a more neutral finish now facing the street. Okay, any other questions? All right, so I think.
So Mr. Bland's hand is up. Yeah, he's not listed as Commissioner, we have to change his name.
Oh, all right.
Fred is raising his hand.
Okay.
Okay.
Fred, go ahead, and I'll.
You're on mute, Fred.
I'm, I'm trying to unmute him.
Okay.
He's got to accept it.
And we should note for the record that Commissioner Bland, Commissioner Devonshire, and I believe, I think Commissioner Chen have joined since the roll.
So Fred, I'm, I'm sent, I'm trying to unmute you, and you just have to accept it. Okay, good.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All I was saying is, I'm here, and I listened to the presentation even though I couldn't see it. I'm here, I'm ready to vote on it whenever the time comes. I just want to know, I'm, I'm here, so I'll wear my hand now.
Okay, great.
And Mark, I was here all the time before the meeting started. This is Wellington.
Okay.
Devonshire, I was here for the roll call as well.
Okay, okay.
Okay, great. Okay, so Commissioners, last time had concerns about the jag, jag in the height, the jog in the height, and the print and the opacity, and the applicants have responded by making it a uniform height, 20% translucent, and a neutral finish instead of a printed pattern. So I think it's been very responsive. One thing we might want to do is we discuss in our comments, if we, we should discuss whether we prefer eight-foot or six-foot. I think the applicants are willing to accept six feet, and you can tell the difference if you look at this particular slide, if you look at the bottom-left image of the printed screen that was shown last time, that is at the eight-foot height, and you see the amount of chain length that's left, and the six-foot height is in the proposed rendering. I think clearly the six-foot height allows for more transparency through the rest of the chain-link fence, so I would be more supportive of six feet, but I would like to go around the table and see if others have an opinion on that as well. So Fred, since you were ready to vote, do you want to go ahead and give some comments?
Well, I was the one also that was horrified by, by the whole idea of this last time, I have to admit, but I thought about it, and I think that this proposal today, the six-footer, without the trumped-up ivy idea, is, is acceptable, so I can vote for it.
Great. And Commissioner Luttrell.
And. Okay, hi, I'm unmuted.
Great.
So it's funny, I have a slightly different opinion than I had last time. I mean, I think I can support this because of the, it's a very busy location. However, I've been walking around, and I've been, I just want to put this on the record. I've been walking around, and I've seen quite a few schoolyards with basketball courts, and they have no screens, and, and the fence is uniformly higher all the way around, so there doesn't have to be this very strange jag in the middle, which I'm assuming was done for cost reasons, because I can't think of another reason why you would do it. So I, I think the material is much better on just being a solid color, six-foot makes sense to me. And, but if, if I had known everything I knew before, I probably would oppose it.
Okay, but you're comfortable that is.
I'm going to in this particular instance, because it's a very busy location.
Okay, great, all right. And Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think it's appropriate, and I think the six-foot height is fine.
Okay. And Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I'm in the, I'm in the Luttrell camp, which is to say, I, this is very unusual in, in New York City playgrounds, but, but I'm, it's at the six-foot without the ivy, and particularly with that curb that adds another foot and a half or so to the, to the screening, I think I can find this appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
So it's slightly, the image on the top left looks shorter, the mesh looks shorter, and the image in the center, the bigger image, is, I think, the, the appropriate height. Looks like it's about a foot above the signpost, the, the panel, panels. So if that one is six feet, then I think that that's appropriate.
Okay, great. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I think this is appropriate. I think the, the change to a neutral and the consistent height at six feet makes it appropriate.
And Commissioner Chapin?
So.
I, I think that the six feet is appropriate, and the increased transparency helps to make it more appropriate to the district.
All right, great. So I think that we have consensus to support it at six feet, and I'm going to see, John, Commissioner Gustafson, would you read the motion? Actually, you know what, don't, because I think you're somewhat reluctant. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you read the motion?
Yes, sure.
Okay, great. Oh, and I did forget Commissioner Devonshire and Commissioner Chen. Do, if you have any objections, just raise your hands.
No problem, no problem.
Okay, great, sorry about that.
Six feet.
Good, thank you.
Shall I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay. In the matter of LPC 20-07474, 657 Greenwich Street, AKA 653 to 677 Greenwich Street, 132, 144 Christopher Street, the Greenwich Village Historic District, a federal-style church building built in 1821 to 22, a federal-style rowhouse built in 1825 to 26, and a school building designed by Thomas M. Bell and built in 1955. The application is to alter a fence. I note that the playground is part of St. Luke's Church and School Complex, and further note that the chain-link fence was present at the time of designation, that a temporary permit to extend the height of the portion of the fence is set to expire, and that the ivy foliage-printed vinyl covering was installed without landmark Preservation Commission permits. I recommend approval, finding that the work did not eliminate any historic fabric or obscurity significant architectural features of the site, that the height of the fence relates to the basketball backboards within the playground, it is consistent with a variety of heights for utilitarian fencing at the institutional playing fields, that the translucent dark-green mesh covering is neutral in appearance, will be applied at a uniform height, and hung from the interior side of the existing chain-link fencing, and will allow semi-obscure views into the playground from the street, and that the two display boxes for community announcement belonging to the church are consistent with similar installations on church properties, and are small in scale, and will not call undue attention to themselves.
All right, and Commissioner Holford Smith, can we have a second?
Hint.
All right, Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes, Chair Carroll.
Hi.
Commissioner Bland. He's muted. Mr. Bland, you're muted.
Sorry, I.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Hello.
Commissioner Chapin.
Hi.
Commissioner Chen. He's muted.
Muted, I'm trying to get him to unmute. You have to accept it, great.
Okay. I.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire.
I.
Commissioner Gustafson.
I.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I.
Commissioner Luttrell.
I.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Hi.
Okay, with ten in favor and one opposed, and the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved, thank you, and we'll now move to the hearing items.
Okay, the first hearing item is item number one, LPC 20-07692, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, block 216, lot 15, 55 Cranberry Street in Brooklyn Heights Historic District. An Italian Renaissance-style church building designed by Beeden Berlinbach and built in 1908 to 09. The application is to modify the facade to create barrier-free access and excavate the side area ways.
And Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing, and please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Adam Zimmerman, I'm the architect. And am I too just?
Yep, please go ahead. If you click on the presentation, you can use the arrow keys to advance as you present your project to us.
I don't see the presentation.
So it's the other screen, and we now have control. Thank you.
There we go, thank you, sorry about that. As I said, my name's Adam Zimmerman, I'm the architect for assumption of the Blessed Virgin Mary Church at 55 Cranberry Street in Brooklyn Heights. I'm also a longtime parishioner to the church and a resident of Brooklyn Heights. In 2019, a task force comprised of a cross-section of parish members was organized to address capital improvements that would bring this exquisite building up to 21st century standards. Together, we named the initiative Renaissance 2020. Looking ahead at the next hundred years, we set out with the following objectives. Preservation, this one's not listed on the slide but has been an underlying and unspoken criteria of all. Completion of deferred maintenance and restoration of the interior. Increased accessibility and mobility. Improved safety for all uses. Enhance functionality and flexibility of space. And update the quality of space. We should also note that this group has been led by Father Michael Callahan, who has extensive experience overseeing capital improvement projects. With his leadership, we've been reminded of the importance to do things right the first time and carefully consider the long-term sustainability of our initiatives. The importance of being good stewards. We hope that through our work, we will enhance outreach and welcome those from Brooklyn Heights community and beyond to make use of and enjoy the space. As you can see here, the church is located at the north side of Brooklyn Heights, indicated with a red star. We're all keenly aware of the significance of this area's history in Brooklyn, and how long our building has been a part of that history. What some may or may not know is that the original 1830s building was in Dumbo, in the vicinity of what's now the base of the Manhattan Bridge. The church at Cranberry Street was built in 1908 primarily by Irish and Italian immigrants, and once complete, the parish moved in and has been here ever since. These next several slides are to orient you to our overall scope of the project and the highlighted items we're focusing on today. The elevator in the upper-right corner of this plan is really the southeast corner of the building. We need an elevator to make the whole building accessible. After extensive review, this is the only reasonable location to do so. The location avoids altering any of the grand steps, the three grand steps at the main entrance to the building, and easily hits all three stops it needs to make, including the raised sanctuary, the side yard, and the lower hall. All three, excuse me, an elevator here eliminates an unsightly and lengthy ramp system on the exterior of the building as well. We also feel that anyone who does need an elevator should have as similar of an entry sequence to the church as everyone else, and therefore as close to the main door as possible. Stained glass. When we install the elevator, the shaft will cover up from the inside a stained glass window. It's not shown on the plan, but it's located above the door in this corner. We intend to relocate that stained glass window to the sacristy right over here to replace a nonhistoric door that is no longer required. Side yards. We will excavate the side yards to create split levels, allowing better general hall access, walkout, rollout access, as well as daylight and ventilation to the hall. In doing so, we need to remove and replace several first-floor steel egress stairs and catwalks that are rusting through and have become a safety issue. Other improvements to the building include design of the hall's interior and systems replacement. Those are not the focus of the presentation but are critical of the use of the building and a significant part of our investment as a support to the parish and the greater community. They also add greater importance to the elevator and side yard changes we're proposing. It's difficult to understand from the plans, but this is a very large church with an equally large hall blow. Access between the floors is minimal, cumbersome, and only by a single tight staircase on the interior, and small stairs on the exterior. Given the size and ceiling height, the parish hall is a gem of a space, but it's inaccessible, unsafe, and underutilized. Our new exterior access elevator, combined with enlarged exterior stairs and side yards, new doors and windows will substantially improve the user experience. It'll better serve the parish and also the community within Brooklyn Heights and beyond. I'd like to address the impact the elevator has on the building. First of all, selecting this location means as minimal impact as possible. It does very little to the interior of the building, and alters only a small portion of one facade. On the photo to the left, we've overlaid and read the new elevator door for easy reference. We originally intended to remove the sill and header of the window above, and key in new bricks with re-pointing around to fully remove the opening. But after speaking and working with the Brooklyn Heights Association, they suggested we leave those elements and infill at a recessed position. This preserves the story of the window and allows for better execution. We all agreed that this was a great solution and the best way forward. The new elevator door will be recessed behind the thick masonry walls of the tower. By pushing it back as far as possible from the facade, it will reduce its visibility from the street and downplay its presence. Additionally, we're placing the controls and call signals around the corner on the inside of the setback or the recess. This prevents visibility from the sidewalk as well. Again, the intent here is as little visual impact as possible. To the left is a photograph of the stained glass window we intend to relocate. The door you see is the door to the sacristy. This is where we propose to relocate the window. This door is strictly for egress, and it's leading to a catwalk that is no longer needed and will be removed. Should be noted that the catwalk is falling off the building and needs to be removed, that the interior design has been modified so that this door is no longer required. Rather than breaking in the door or installing a new window in its place, we feel it's the perfect location to place the stained glass window. It'll be in an area that's used every day, so it'll be backlit often and visible from the streets, and its location will enhance the interior. Also note, the current vestibule is locked for security purposes. From inside, this window is never visible, and the lights are rarely, if ever, on. Once the new elevator is installed, the window will not be visible from the interior at all. Repositioning ensures long-term enjoyment of this historic architectural detail. We're also pointing out the cornerstone. This is the original brownstone cornerstone from the 1830s building in Dumbo, was relocated here when the new building was built. In an effort to preserve it, we propose removing it and reinstalling it at a protected location on the interior. However, we'd still like to replace the replica, or to replace it on the outside with a cast-stone replica. If we locate an appropriate reclaimed piece of real brownstone that's large enough to replicate this identical cornerstone, we'll do so. However, we've not yet been able to locate one, so we're asking for cast stone. The slide, slide eight, the left is another overlay for reference, and the right is a rendering of our proposed improvements illustrating the three main elements discussed so far. The relocated stained glass is in the background. The elevator doors to the left, the walkout side yard is in the center. As you can see, the new stairs down to the walkout side yard will start several feet back from the existing stairs, and it'll only be slightly wider than what currently exists. Because the new work related to the side yard is going down, it's relatively inconspicuous compared to the current conditions. Please also take note of the paving. It's difficult to decipher from these photographs, but you can get a sense of the conditions. It is in serious disrepair, creating both maintenance and safety concerns. This slide is a zoom-in of the same image on the prior. Here, we'd like to point out, we intend to use infilled white brick from the elevator door opening. We'd like We'd like to, we will match the existing white stunt, white limestone header to match the existing stone elements. We will match the granite base. The paving will be a new bluestone look concrete. So we intend to use concrete. Pigmented with dyes on it as well as scored into a paving pattern. We will replicate the existing steel railings that are on site and paint to match. We will relocate the stained glass window in the back. Sorry, I jumped too fast. Overall, we feel this will substantially improve an otherwise underutilized side yard. And the building as a whole, creating an improved experience both for the users and passersby at the street. This section perspective shows the same elements from a different vantage point. The doors and windows at the basement will replicate the historic details above, including the arches and the masonry work. The new doors and windows, excuse me, adding these elements makes the new hall accessible to the broader community without traversing through the sanctuary. The elevator will have secured and controlled stops. Allowing direct access to either the hall or the church depending on the events. Existing side yards, I've mentioned, have become a problem with time. The concrete is heaved, the drains are clogged and no longer drain at load or no longer exist at low spots. The paving has become a trip hazard and unattractive. With our side yard improvements, we intend to fix the paving. The best long term low maintenance solution is a patterned and pigmented concrete. New paving will be properly graded. It'll eliminate trip hazards and create a durable low maintenance surface for all uses for years to come. Here's an image of our expected tone of the concrete. Slides twelve through nineteen are here for quick reference. I believe everyone has seen these, so we'll just quickly peruse through them. This photo key plan indicates each photograph that follows tag. These two photos replicate the nineteen forties tax photo on the cover with and without cars for reference. Here we zoom in a little bit on the southeast yard where most of the work will take place. The gates in the foreground are to remain. The nonhistoric bluestone pavers you see directly behind the gates were approved and installed in two thousand and five. We'll carefully remove these and reset them to the new lower side yard. Since two thousand and five, many parishioners have sponsored the church. Which has then memorialized them into these pavers. These need to be protected and reset appropriately. These two photos show the southwest corner and side yard. As you can see, this side is much narrower on the west. Again, this is the southwest corner. With a confessional bays, there'll be virtually no visibility down to the side yards. Also like to point out the, if you zoom, if you have an opportunity to zoom in. This is a great opportunity to see the condition of the side yards. Here's a view from the northeast corner on mid off. You can still see through if you're positioned just right, but the, this location is where the sacristy wings project, making it the widest portion of the building, limiting through visibility. Same view from the east side this time. Again, on mid off. This diagram is just to help illustrate the sightlines so you can get an understanding of what you will and will not be able to see from the streets. Here's an illustration we created from the interior to the side yard showing the new windows and openings compared to what currently exists. Slides twenty two through twenty nine are again here for reference. I'll speed through them unless anyone has any questions.
Just speed through. Yeah, I think you can just speed through them. Okay, and, and while we flip through those, maybe I'll start by asking if any commissioners have any questions? And if you do, I'll have to ask you to do two things. One is raise your hand, but also Zoom has evidently updated the webinar so that when I unmute you, I have to ask to unmute you. So you may get a request to ask to, to accept my unmuting you. So please accept that as well. So if there are any questions, please go ahead and raise hands. Okay, not seeing any questions. Why don't we turn to public testimony?
Sarah, before we begin, I just want to know for the record that Commissioner Goldman has entered the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I see Commissioner Jefferson has a question. Please go ahead.
I have two questions. One is in the, in this perspective that you're showing now, number thirty. Existing brick is going to be look as beautiful as your perspective showed, or is it going to remain the same value on the left hand?
The existing brick will remain as it currently is. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, is it going to be power washed or cleaned?
Oh. We, as we excavate, we will have to power wash and clean. We're fortunate that the red brick does go down all the way to the foundations. Let me get back to to a side elevation here. We, we have got, the church has been fortunate enough to go through and exercise to repoint and waterproof the building over the last several years. So everything above grade is already in clean working condition. We do not intend this project to grow up above our lower level work.
So, so go back to the original slide. Eighteen, I think it is, or thirty two, the, the slide with the rendering.
Seconds.
That one. I mean, I think you have a wonderful proposal. The color though of the existing building is totally off because it's really much more darker than that. The image is different from what you're proposing here, I think, right? Because the brick is heavier, darker. So that's one question. My second question is, is the, the arch, the path, is it going to be open for the public or is it going to be closed off? Is it going to be a shortcut or not?
It will not be, well, this would be a user question. I don't know if Father Michael's on the call right now, but currently, currently there are gates and for security purposes, those gates are closed. They will, they are open at certain public events in certain times, but in general, they're closed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so now we'll turn to public testimony. Lisa, do we have anyone who is here to speak on this item?
Yes, we have two people that signed up and also have raised their hand. So I'm going to start by bringing Kelly Carroll into the room. Hi, Kelly.
Hi. Yes, I can. Good morning, Kelly Carroll for Historic Districts Council. HTC supports this application which will enliven and activate the eastern alley of this church in a sensitive manner. While the relocation of the stained glass window for the construction of an elevator is appropriate. We question the choice of a blind masonry window as opposed to a simplified window created as a shadow box. Regarding the proposed excavated east and west facades, we ask that the fenestration pattern in these areas match the window pattern at the clear story levels. And thus eliminate the fan light transoms. Finally, we do not believe aluminum windows and doors to be an appropriate material for the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Kelly. And next we'll bring in Judy Stanton. Okay, Judy.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Judy Stanton speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We support the changes related to the area excavation, but we believe the elevator proposal needs refinements. We're happy to see the window above the proposed elevator will be infilled with mashing brick instead of removed altogether. Which allows its original lintel and sill to be retained. We do not agree with the attempt to duplicate this window's historic keystone lintel by adding a replica above the new elevator opening. This contemporary entrance should not pass itself off as historic. Or let the lintel compete with the original, nor is this an entrance that should be calling attention to itself. We also feel the elevator entrance would be better served by adding an outer door. This would allow the public facing door to be wood instead of metal, which we think would be much more complimentary to the building's historic front facade. An outer door and its framing would also provide more protection for the elevator door itself and the interior and exterior mechanicals. Which will otherwise be exposed to the elements. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And those are all the people that signed up and have their hands raised.
Rich, do we have any written testimony?
Nothing additional that hasn't even adjusted.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Zimmerman, would you like to respond to some of the comments that were made by the Brooklyn Heights Association or HTC?
Sure. The most recent one about the elevator is an interesting conversation. Because we've had that exact conversation internally. As well as with landmarks, the BHA. And many interested parties. It's, it's, it's interesting to hear the varying perspectives and about it. We've drawn it several different ways. The consensus, I would say, is that the way we presented it has, has been the consensus. However, we're not opposed to, we, we actually had the conversation, we're not opposed to fully removing the lintel above. The conversation came up that we all agree with is that at that point, it may look like a modern intervention. Outside the intent of the detailing on the facades. So we kind of all came to the conclusion that the lintel above is appropriate. The wood door versus metal doors. So the current proposal is that we have the metal doors. There is an interior and an exterior door. So there's the interior door of the elevator, which is the door that travels up and down with the elevator. And there's an exterior door that will obviously stay at the exterior. That door, we landed on metal and painted to match the brick. And our conclusion was that, and we were happy to explore copper or brass or even wood. Our overall conclusion was that a painted metal door will disappear more so than an element that we're newly introducing. So the front doors of the building have big, grand historic wood doors and they're gorgeous. Our concern is that if we tried to replicate something like that, it would not be, it would not be in the same. It would be difficult to replicate at the same level of importance. And we feel that it would become a distraction rather than, rather than receding effectively. The first, can, the first comment I believe was about aluminum windows. We, we have found. So our intent is, yes, we want to, you know, we would love to put in steel windows. We're also concerned about durability and energy performance. There are historic aluminum windows and profiles that we would prefer to use. There are companies that can replicate steel windows in aluminum. They can also replicate wood windows in aluminum. And we feel that because these will be high use heavily trafficked doors for a very long time. We feel that's the best solution. Alternatively, we would be happy to explore using wood windows and doors. However, we feel the aluminum is a better solution, but we're not talking about aluminum storefronts. We're talking about, we'd be happy to provide details for these.
And these are the windows that are sort of below grade in the new area way, sign the new side yard.
Correct. Did that answer the two? I believe I covered everything.
I think so. Commissioners, do we have any other questions? All right, not seeing any other questions. I think we can move to close the hearing and move into our discussion. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Moved.
And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that?
Second.
Okay. And so why don't we start at the head of the table and work our way around?
Can you have an all in favor for that motion?
Yes, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll move into discussion. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you start the discussion?
Sure. I think this is acceptable. And approvable.
Okay, great. Commissioner Chen?
I agree.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I agree, but as a nearby resident, I want to expand my thoughts a little bit more than the first two commissioners did. I think this is an exemplary presentation and, and application to bring this really handsome contributing building. As they were saying, into the twenty first century and, and long into the future as well. Providing a modernization of, of the use of the building interior and from an interior point of view. But the exterior issues which we deal with, I think are really done very creatively within tight, this tight confinement. I listened to and thought through the, the arguments made by the, both the Brooklyn Heights Association and the Historic Districts Council. But then I listened to the architect's articulate response and I think I'm comfortable with it as is. Rather than the changes that were being suggested. So I, I really, really am very pleased to see this. I think it's an excellent, excellent application and look forward to seeing it happen.
Commissioner Luffey?
Oh, I, I want to echo some of the things that Fred said. I, I do think the presentation was very, very good and it's clear that this project was done in a very thoughtful way. I think a lot of the visual impact of the elevator door is minimal. I like the fact that it mirrors what was there before. I love the idea of placing the window in a, a, a new place that's going to provide more visibility. The concrete seems, like a, the stained concrete seems like a wonderful idea. I I, I'm okay with the, it sounds like the aluminum material for the doors and windows is going to be a high quality material. And if the applicant works with staff, I'm okay with that as well. I, I do want to say, there's just one little thing. If you turn to page twenty three.
Am I still controlling? No.
You know, but if you visually, and I know this is actually not going to be apparent to anybody, we're seeing, we're seeing it a little differently. But if you just look at the, the windows, you know, on either side of the door. And the lintels in the top where you have the, that little, you know, splaying, I would actually have those lintels mirror, you know, more of what's going above than it seems like you're introducing a new pattern. And then finally, I want to say that you know, these community rooms. you know, these community rooms are very, very important gatherings after a service and for service and, you know, for other occasions. They're used quite regularly in many places, houses of worship, and they're often in the... And they're often very, you know, they look like a basement room. But, you know, the people who are the congregants who are in the room are just very happy to be there to commune with everybody else. And I think it is wonderful that the church is, you know, bringing this up to a level, making it accessible to everybody. And even though this is not within our purview, you know, renovating the space to make this room can be serviced and used in the proper way. So I fully support this application.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
Oh, I think this is a great proposal, and I approve it.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I think the proposal is completely appropriate. It's thoughtful. I think in every feature, they did their level best to make this a conform to the beauty of the building as it stands. So I'm completely in favor.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I had some concerns about the metal doors, painted metal door particularly. And, but I think that the applicant made a really strong case for their thinking and reasoning, and so that's no longer a concern for me, and I think that the rest of the proposal is really strong and approvable. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I think this is a really good application. I think they've done an excellent job of thinking it through and suggesting a very sensitive way to upgrade this church.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with the comments of previous commissioners, and I can approve this as presented.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree too. I think it's a lovely project. I do, I did, it did occur to me that the same comment that Jeannie had about the mullions, but I think they could work with staff on just having the mullions, just looking at how the mullions relate to the building. I think we have a very simple thing to have it feel a little bit more consistent with the penetration of the building, but I think it's a very, very strong application and it's fine.
Okay, thank you. So I think we do have a consensus to support as is. The question of the mullions, I think, you know, those windows are seen very obliquely and minimally as they are sort of below the sidewalk level. But certainly, if the applicant wishes to continue to explore that, that would be welcomed, and they can do that with staff. But I think we can go ahead and make a motion to approve it as is. Commissioner Devonshire, would you make that motion?
In the matter of 55 Cranberry Street in the Brooklyn Heights District, an application to modify the facade to create barrier-free access and excavate side areaways. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will enable barrier-free access to the church in the least intrusive manner possible. The relocation of the existing stained glass window to another area of the church will maintain this significant feature of the site. That infilling the existing window with recessed matching brick will retain the historic penetration pattern of the primary facade as it wraps the corner. That the new at-grade entrance for the elevator centered beneath a blocked window will feature a splayed lintel similar to the window above, and that the door will be finished to match the color of the surrounding brick, harmonizing with the facade. That the existing brownstone cornerstone relocated from the original church that no longer exists will be removed and placed inside for public viewing, and a replica will be installed in its place. That the excavation of the two side yards and resulting exposed basement walls with new arch windows and entrances will be below grade and only minimally visible from the Cranberry Street. And the exposed basement facades will be clad in brickwork to match the existing masonry above. And that the existing bluestone paving to be removed is nonhistoric, and that the gritted limestone tinted, or bluestone tinted concrete and simple metal railings are typical of side areaways.
Okay, and Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? Oops, I think you...
So moved.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Kelly Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, eleven in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the next item.
Next item is number two, LPC 19-27244. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 173, lot 17, 74 Leonard Street, aka 72 to 74 Leonard Street in the Tribeca East Historic District. A second empire-style store and loft building built in 1864 to 65. The application is to extend an elevator bulkhead.
The applicant has joined the hearing. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Thanks, Corey. This is Anna Corbetta from the Tora Collaborative. I'm the architect on the project along with James Hasicorn, who's also on this call, architect from the Tora Collaborative. Thank you for your time and for being here. Seventy-four Leonard is a building located in the Tribeca Historic District. Okay, perfect. So, okay, Seventy-four Leonard, yeah, is a building located in the Tribeca Historic District. It's located in the block between Broadway and Church Street. And it's a five-story building with an existing penthouse, and currently is provided with an existing elevator that goes from the ground floor to the fifth floor. The proposal is about extending that elevator to go to the penthouse level, so to provide a new landing and so an accessible acreage path out of the building. Right now, the penthouse is accessible only through the stairs. So here in this page, we can see the existing condition of the front facade, where you can see here in the corner, the existing bulkhead, which is approximately eight feet high. Next to it, this elevation, we have the proposed front facade where it shows the proposed extension of the elevator bulkhead, which will provide the new landing at the penthouse level. In this page, we can see the block elevation of the existing condition with the side plan. The third page, we can see the proposal in the block elevation. So in red, with a red hatch, is the extension of the bulkhead elevator. And in the side plan, we can see the bulkhead location with the small corridor which will connect to the landing with the existing penthouse. Here is a zoom to the proposed elevations. So we went through, we had help, we had a consultant on board, elevator consultant, that specified the heights requirement for this bulkhead extension. And since we are keeping the existing shaft and also we're keeping the existing machinery, we have to locate the elevator room on top of the elevator shaft, which is the current condition. Currently, the elevator bulkhead is on top of the elevator shaft. So we have fourteen feet of overhead above the landing of the penthouse. And on top of that, we have a foot of structure. And above that, we have a nine feet of elevator room machine. Here is west elevation that shows the existing condition here on the left side. The, we were able, we were able, like, along with the elevator consultant, to arrange slightly the location of the elevator bulkhead inwards. So right now, the north facade of the elevator bulkhead is approximately at seven feet and eight inches from the front facade of the building. And we were able to push it inward in order to limit the visibility from the street. So the proposal is calling out for approximately eleven feet and six inches from the front facade. These are pictures that shows the existing condition of the front terrace, where you can see the elevator bulkhead, which is the small bulk that is currently catted in a blue standing seam. Here on this page, we are showing like the material which are proposing to use for the bulkhead extension, which is a three-part stucco finish. And here on the right side of the page, it shows the extension of the bulk, you know, 3D views. These are the views that shows the mockup, which is still on site. On the left side, we have the real mockup, and on the right side, it's in the 3D rendering view. So this is the view walking down Seventy-four Leonard Street towards the church street. And it's possible to see the mockup just right above the corners of the building next door. This is Seventy-four Leonard, where there is the fire escape attached to the front facade. This next picture is that shows the mockup view from the front of the building of Seventy-four Leonard. It's possible to see it because, yeah, the corners is cut to give access to the fire escape. And then these views, which is the worst view, is a view from across the street of the church street. Since we have this view corridor, the mockup is quite visible. And then this is the last page of the presentation where we're showing the existing extension of the elevator bulkhead, which you can see from these plans that is closer currently to the front facade. And in this plan, is the proposed plan of the penthouse floor, shows the elevator shaft, which is kept, kept like in the same location as it currently is because we're using it. But we were able to move inward, elevator room, which will be located above the elevator shaft. And then we added just a plan of the existing ground floor just to show the condition of the existing elevator accessibility from the lobby and also how the stairs wraps around to, that is the stairs that gives access to the cellar, just to show that we are pretty bonded with the space that we have at the ground floor and also the floor above. So this is the end of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? If we do, please raise your hand. All right, and not seeing any questions, let's see if we have any public testimony. Lisa, do we have anyone here to speak on this item?
We do. We had one person sign up, Kelly Carroll, and she has her hands up. See, Kelly, I'm meeting you.
Thank you. Good morning. Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. More study is needed for the proposed elevator bulkhead, which looms nearly seventeen feet above the roofline of the existing penthouse addition. Its height and its situation near the front facade of this building results in much visibility, which can and should be reduced. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kelly.
Okay, and Rich, do we have any written testimony or resolution from the community board?
We do have a resolution from community board one recommending.
Sorry. It was sort of broken up. Can you just say it again?
Sorry. Yes, we have a resolution from community board one recommending deny.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Corbetta, would you like to respond to some of these comments about the height and visibility?
Yes, so we asked to our elevator consultant to actually do more studies in regards to elevator extension. And since we are keeping the existing shaft and we're also using the existing machinery, this is the only solution. There will be more alternatives if we will change the type of elevator, but that will trigger like a different shaft size, so that will also trigger changes to the ground floor and also to the floors above, which will then be something, a project that our client will not be able to take care of and to conduct. So this is really the only solution. And also, we also look into the option even to lower the speed of delivery, but the speed of delivery is really like the minimum speed that you could possibly have. So now, unfortunately, like, there are no other alternatives.
Okay, and the view where you see the most of it is that limited corridor?
Yes.
Okay.
From church straight, exactly.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Any questions? Okay. Not seeing any ques... Oh, I see one question, Commissioner Goldblum?
I just wanted to clarify, the material being used for the cladding is called out as a stove three coat product. Is that a cementitious?
It's a three-part stucco.
But cementitious?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, all right. So if there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and move into our discussion. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor of closing the hearing? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. And we'll start our discussion, and I think, you know, this, just to provide some context, this is the, in Tribeca, where we have seen that historically, these buildings featured utilitarian features on the roof, including bulkheads and sometimes very large invisible bulkheads, as the elevators were often right behind the front facade. So I think that the presence of a bulkhead is in keeping with the industrial character of the district. And I think that this one view is a very limited corridor where you see it against the backdrop of something taller in the background. And so, you know, maybe the finish could be thought about in that context. But, you know, those are my thoughts. I'm going to go ahead and start, and Commissioner, we'll start at the other end. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start on this one?
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think that we've approved bulkheads of this type in clear view. I do share your interest, though, in looking at the finish. My recollection, and it's hardly scientific, is that many of these are black, you know, tar. And I think the light color might be something that they could look with staff at and just kind of look around the neighborhood and see what's going to blend in the best.
Okay, all right, great. Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with both your remarks and the comments of Commissioner Goldblum. And I can approve it as presented, but we worked, the staff worked with them on what is the most appropriate to color.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. I think that the presence of the bulkhead is acceptable. And I think Commissioner Goldblum's suggestion of maybe a little bit darker color might help it recede. Otherwise, I think.
All right, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm in agreement. Dark gray, better than light gray, but otherwise acceptable.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. I think in this neighborhood context is everything. This is, it wouldn't be appropriate in a lot of other neighborhoods, but here it is. And I agree that they should work with staff on the color of the finish.
Okay. And Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I also agree with my fellow commissioners.
All right. Commissioner Bland?
Agree. And I think the darker color will be better.
Commissioner Chen?
Likewise, yeah. I agree with all the comments.
And Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with my colleagues.
Okay, great. So I think we have a consensus for approval with the recommendation that it be a darker color. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you read that motion?
For, hold on a sec. All right. There we go. All righty. Regarding 74 Leonard Street in the Tribeca Historic District, the application is to extend an elevator bulkhead. And note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the work will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the simple masking and materials of the enlarged bulkhead featuring a light gray finished stucco cladding will be in keeping with utilitarian bulkheads found at buildings of this type, style, age throughout this historic district. The enlarged bulkhead will only be seen from public to curators in context of other rooftop accretions and adjacent smaller buildings. And will have a discreet presence in the surrounding streets, roof scape, that the roof, the work will not detract from special architectural and historic character of the building or the Tribeca Historic District. The applicant will work with the staff to explore the right color.
Okay. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Rich, will you call the vote?
Rich might not be able to. So I think I can jump in.
Okay.
Chair Carroll?
I.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
I.
Commissioner Chapin?
I.
Commissioner Chen?
I.
Commissioner Devonshire?
I.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I.
Commissioner Gustafson?
I.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
I.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I.
And with that, the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to the next item now.
Now, I have to recuse.
Yes. So Commissioner Bland will be recused from 75 Broadway. So.
Remind me how I do that, or do you do it?
So you're going to turn off your volume and your video?
Stop volume. I'm muted.
Right. Commissioner Bland has left the meeting.
Okay. And we'll move on to item number three. This is LPC 20-09961, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 49, lot 1, 75 Broadway, the Trinity Church and graveyard individual landmark, a Gothic revival style church designed by Richard Upjohn and built in 1846. The application is to replace a window.
And Commissioners, we're just waiting on one more applicant to join the hearing. Just a moment. And the applicant is, who's to speak is, is still pending. So I will ask the other member of the applicant team to perhaps just begin the presentation, or we can wait for another moment.
I think that would be great if we could have somebody else start the presentation.
Hello? Is my audio on?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, this is Catherine Malashevsky from MBB. I believe we're waiting for Jeff for a moment. But I can begin as requested. So I am the Director of Preservation for MBB Architects. We're working with Trinity Church on this application. Sorry. Yep. Was that Jeff by chance?
No, I'm not seeing him on the attendee list. I understand he's now calling in, so I will keep an eye out for that.
Okay. We just want to thank LPC for your time and all of the thought and consideration that you've provided to Trinity and ourselves throughout this process. Been very helpful in guiding the future of the church with all of our projects, especially with this major renovation that's going on right now. So we want to propose to you the replacement of the east stained glass window that lives on Broadway and is viewable from down Wall Street. So the main arguments for this presentation is first and foremost, the window is part of a larger message that the church is relaying through its stained glass. Stained glass has historically been used to relay messages of scripture and religion, even through medieval times when illiteracy warranted that the stained glass was used as a form of teaching and communication. Our window is doing the same today. Windows are a unique typology in that architecture expresses symbolism and meaning and tradition, rather than solely focusing on function, which you find more in residential and commercial buildings.
If I just, just a moment, the other applicant has joined and I'm now just going to give him the ability to speak.
Great.
I'm mute. So apologies for that. And.
Hello. May I? This is Jeff Murphy.
Hi, Jeff. Please go ahead. Catherine was just beginning the introduction, so please feel free to pick up the presentation.
Okay. Apologies for having a challenge getting on this. I'm just calling up the presentation. Catherine, maybe you could just tell me which slide we're on?
We're still on the introduction side and we're just discussing the evolution of the church.
Okay. So we're on the first slide.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm just going to go into my full, full presentation and apologies for overlapping Catherine. Thank you for this time to, to describe our proposal for Trinity Church's new east window. I'm Jeffrey Murphy, a partner at MBB Architects. I'm with Reverend Philip Jackson, who is the priest in charge and vicar of Trinity Church, and my MBB colleague Catherine Malashevsky. We would, we're going to move, I'm going to move fairly quickly through a number of slides here because I have a lot of material. And I'd like to just start off by, if you go to the, the image of the, the objectives of, of the design, are you on that Catherine, the second one?
Yes.
Okay. So the most compelling reason for the new east window is to convey the mission of Trinity Church. And Reverend Jackson is going to speak to that topic next. The church typology by its very nature is designed to convey symbolism, meaning tradition and theologies. And that's what, in this case, the east window is doing for us. A new east window is part of a larger rejuvenation project and part of a long tradition of physical change at Trinity. But the replacement of the east window has historic precedence at Trinity and at other New York City churches. This is an opportunity finally to reinterpret the Episcopalian east-facing, a tradition of east-facing orientation. And then finally, the artwork is appropriate in this place and time. And we'll explain why we believe so in, in, in a few moments. Reverend Jackson, do you want to jump in?
Sure. Thanks, Jeff. And thanks to the LPC for hearing our presentation. With the recent renovation of the church itself, we kind of felt that we wanted to do something in this east window that would tie specifically into Trinity's mission and its historic mission in, in, in New York. And when I was asked to choose a text for it, this text was called the Parable of the Talents from the 25th chapter of Matthew, immediately came to mind because it, it really captures the, really the, the gift that we were given in 1705 by Queen Anne, which was called the Church Farm, and which over the years, we have stewarded and, and are now using it in exactly the way that this, this parable and its, its following section commend all of us to, to behave. In a nutshell, what this parable and what we were trying, what I was trying to get at in this, is it, it has to do with a man, a man who gives his servants property, one he gives five talents. A talent was a, a measure of money in the ancient world. To another, he gives two and to another one. He then goes away. When he comes back, he wants to see that they have done something with the talents that they've been given. The one he gave, he gives five to, makes, trades with them and makes five more, similarly the one who was given two. But the one who was given one just buried his talent and then gave it back to the master, which the master was not very happy about. Now, one of the things that Tom Denny, our artist, did that was so brilliant when we, when we were considering his presentation, is that he then went on and added the, the next parable, or the Parable of the Judgments, the Judgment of the Nations. And he incorporated that into the window itself. And why that was so profound is because it, what it, what it gets at is that we were not just to, we are not just to invest what, what God has given each of us. We are to then use that on behalf of those who are most needy. And so what happens in the Judgment of the Nations is we are told that we are to use those, that, that investment that we, we've been given, were to do these six things. Were to feed the hungry, give drink to the thirsty, welcome the stranger, clothe the naked, take care of the sick, and visit those in prison. And it turns out, this was actually kind of a prescient parable to choose because right now, the COVID epidemic, Trinity is once again, living this parable out all over the world. We are, we have, we've been using the talent that Queen Anne gave us in 1705. We've been using the investment that we made on that to help people quite literally at this time, all over the world. So for us, this, this text was, i- it's just stunning appropriately, appropriate choice for Trinity Church. And I, I could go on and preach a sermon, but I won't. I won't do that to you. But that's why, that's why this text is so wonderful for us. And you're going to see a little section, you've probably already seen the little section that Tom Denny did, where he showed some being given water to drink. And so he incorporated that figurative landscape in the, the window itself. So I'll stop there. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Jackson. So I'm going to continue on to page four, Catherine. This is an image of the church showing, showing its prominence along the, the main axis of, ending the main axis of Wall Street. And the yellow just shows the, the east window that we will be, we propose replacing. Five, Catherine. This is the site that shows the aerial view, showing, showing the location of Trinity Church along Broadway. And then on the right, the site plan, which shows the arrow indicating where the east window is terminating the axis of Wall Street. Next, please. This slide shows the evolution of change at Trinity Church. This is the third church on the site, completed with a design by Richard Upjohn in 1846. And you can see there were campaigns in 1877, 1913, 1966, all of which added onto this building. And if you go to the next, Catherine. And our, our project, we added this canopy, which you approved a couple of years ago, and then several terraces, which enable us to support the procession to the back of the church and also make the building more handicap accessible. Page eight, please, Catherine. These are examples of stained glass, showing the variety of stained glass at Trinity Church, and, and noting that they're all, all of these stained glass elements are of their time. And so you see the 1877, the 1913, the 1967, and the 1846 original chancel glass, all of it being quite different. Next slide, please. This is a image of the Claire Story glass in the, in the 60s. On the left, you're seeing the yellow glass that was put in place. And, and we were able to, to find a historic quarry that enabled us to recreate what we think was a very close match to the original on the right. And you approved that a couple of years ago. Page 10, please. These are images of the east window between 1906 and the 1960s. And you can see it was, we call this donor glass. Essentially, it was glass that, that was intended to be replaced with, with perhaps a more figural donor, donor artwork. And this was replaced, if you go to page 11, in, in the 1960s with new glass, that was actually, actually had a larger quarry size. And it's basically showing these images, the, the sort of issues, issues we're having with this repair and other conditions in the glass. If you go to page 12. This just, on the left, just speaks to the fact that this glass, this stained glass window was never intended to be seen from the inside of the church. It was always covered with an organ. And in fact, we're in, we're also replacing this organ and the stained glass will remain covered and you won't, will not be able to see it from the inside. On the right, this is, this is a, an image of the church, basically showing that the chancel is west-facing. This was something that was opposed by Richard Upjohn. He was advocating for a figural window and the chancel facing to the east, which is the Episcopal tradition. And we sort of view this, this project almost as a way of realizing what was perhaps a Richard Upjohn's original design intent by having a figural window facing east. Next. These are images of Trinity Wall Street, the one in the 1860s, when this may have, Trinity Church was originally the tallest building in Manhattan. And this shows how over time, the city has grown up around it, but that it still commands an amazing position at the end of Wall Street and seeing how prominent really this east window is as you, as you see it frontally. The proposed design. Trinity went through an international design competition, started with around 20 artists and winnowed that down to a shortlist of about five. And then there was a competition to design a window based on the, the Parable of Talents. And Tom, Thomas Denny almost unanimously emerged as, as, you know, the winner of this competition with his, with this artwork. And just to give you a little background, he's a world-renowned stained glass artist from England. He's, he has works throughout Europe. He has works throughout Europe. He uses techniques, used techniques and materials used in the 14th century. And most recent work, he has had pieces put in the, installed in the Durham Cathedral and the Gloucester Cathedral. And the two primary design ideas of this window are the use of jewel tones, which were intended to relate to the chancel window, and the use of red as a means to create a field in working with the brownstone so that the figural elements in the sort of blues and purples pop from this sort of broader field. So, you know, we actually see this kind of use of color and this idea about color as something that's quite deferential to the architecture of the church itself. This is an actual panel. It's a sample panel, but it shows Thomas Denny's technique, which is multiple layers of glass. You're seeing leads that divide pieces of the glass and the fine detail of the figures within that composition. The other thing that's interesting about this is just how, you know, we're showing you basically in the rendering, Catherine, if you just go back to the previous, we're showing in this rendering on the building, basically dropping in a watercolor that's quite difficult to capture the actual richness of the glass itself. If you go to the glass panel, Catherine. But anyway, we think that, you know, obviously, this represents better the quality of the composition than the colors. Go to the next, Catherine. This shows an image from across the street, and really, the prominence of this. This is what you'll see as you see the church from down Wall Street. Next image, Catherine. These two shots, which are oblique images of the church, show how the buttresses really hide that east window. And you really only see the east window until you come around and are sort of frontally facing the Trinity Church entry. Go to the next, Catherine. These are images of Tiffany replacement windows. And so this is just to say that in numerous churches throughout New York City, replacing existing glass, in some cases, that donor glass with new art is actually a tradition and has been going on for quite a while. If you go to the next, Catherine. The images of Marble Collegiate Church on the left, you'll see actually the original window there was a quarry glass window, and it was replaced with this, with a figural glass artwork in 2001. And similar, at Eldred Street Synagogue, this work in 2010 by Kiki Smith replaced a rather ordinary banal window, just intended to bring light into the space. Go to the next, please. These two drawings of the existing elevation of the window and the letting and the divisions, panel divisions, and the proposed, basically show that the, you know, with the quarries, the divisions were quite regular. And in the proposed design, they're quite irregular, and they're based really on where the figures are within the composition. If you go to the next image, please. This shows that this is, there's precedence for this at Trinity Church. This is the chancel, the chancel window. And it also has irregular divisions that are really based on the figures. And this is just a consistent trait in the church. Next, please. This is a section through, on the left, through the window itself, and showing that there's a light box, an LED light box, set three feet back from the face of the glass, that will illuminate this in different ways at different times of the day. Next, Catherine. This is a still condition, showing the position of the stained glass and the proposed protective glazing relative to the existing glass in the east window. Go to the next, please. This is the same as a jam condition. Next, please. I'd like to conclude by saying the following. The east window contributes to the mission of Trinity Church. The replacement of non-figural with figural stained glass has precedence in New York City. This new window is consistent with the evolution of stained glass at Trinity Church. The new window design purposefully contrasts the existing window design, contrasts the existing window design such that it's of its time. The new design is appropriate and deferential to the existing historic fabric of the church. Trinity's success, longevity, and relevance since the 1690s has relied on a certain evolution and change. The proposed east window design is consistent with this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? All right, not seeing any hands raised. I think we'll move to public testimony. Lisa, is anyone attending the meeting wishing to speak?
Yes, nobody signed up to speak, but I do see somebody with their hand raised. Julie Sloan, I assume that means that you want to testify. So I'm bringing you in. Julie, I've unmuted you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, and you have three minutes. And please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Julie Sloan. I'm a stained glass conservation consultant and historian of American stained glass with over 35 years in the business. I was hired to inspect the windows at Trinity Church after the 9/11 disaster and to write a thorough condition study on the windows in 2012. I published a comprehensive article on the history of the windows in 2012. And I'm writing a comprehensive history of stained glass in America in which Trinity Church will feature prominently. I don't oppose the replacement of the existing window, and I don't oppose any of the logic behind the replacement. What I am concerned about is that the proposed window is an English window rather than an American work of art. Trinity Church is a monument of American architecture, one of the first Gothic Revival buildings erected here by an important American architect, Richard Upjohn. It became an icon of the style that was imitated around the country. Its existing windows are some of the first, and certainly, some of the most important works of stained glass in America. A founding father of the country, Alexander Hamilton, who fought in the Revolution against the British, is buried in the churchyard. To have even considered an international competition to design the east window is an affront to American artists. There's certainly plenty of talent in this country to meet the needs for this window. I strongly urge the Landmarks Preservation Commission to deny the church permission to install this window and encourage it to find an American artist to design it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, and I do see one more hand raised. David Judson. David, I'm unmuting you now. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is David Judson. I am the president of Judson Studios, which is a stained glass firm in Los Angeles, California, that was founded by my great-great-grandfather in 1897. And, but I do not speak today with my hat on as a stained glass artisan, but as the president of the Stained Glass Association of America. And I kind of want to second what Julie Sloan has to say, that this is a missed opportunity for a selection of an American artist for a lot of reasons. As the history of stained glass is extremely important, not only to Western civilization, but to this extremely high-profile window in the United States with such an American landmark. And so I do believe that this is a very good decision to replace the temporary glass there. There's no doubt about that. But I do want to speak up for representing American stained glass artists, that we do wish that this was reconsidered, that, you know, the importance of this for our nation, that this be an American selection for artists. And I hope that you will reconsider your decision. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. And with that, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. And I would note that we received a resolution from Community Board One, who recommended approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. So would the applicant team like to respond to the comments that were made in the public testimony?
Reverend Jackson, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, I would, actually. I hear what they're saying, and I'm sensitive to that. We did actually look at quite a few American artists from the very beginning. We even talked about that. What it came down to, as Jeff said, Tom Denny's work just, just was so spectacular and so unanimously chosen by our group, that we just felt that was the best piece of art that we had seen. But we did actually interview quite a number of American artists and looked at them and considered them. I even, I ended up going to Tom Denny's studio in England. And he is an artist of such profound depth, that he just, he just really, he just really brought it home for us.
Also, this is Catherine Malashevsky to add. The interiors of Trinity Church in 1877 were modified. The chancel was modified, the addition was added to the rear. And something that was really unique about the additions that they made to the chancel is it was one of the first times in American history where they were doing a collaborative effort with English masons and mosaicists. So Trinity itself does have a tradition of bringing in non-American artists to come work with Trinity in order to achieve what they want to represent. And if you've ever been to the church, I'd love to show you the raritos. The carvings are beautiful, and the mosaics are stunning, and they're quite a focal piece. So this is actually in tradition with Trinity's historic approach to artisans and craftsmanship.
Okay, thank you. And I would also just add that for the commission, we can't regulate the art in terms of who the artist is. The proposal before us is for a certain design of stained glass, and we would have to look at the relationship of that design to the history of the church, the history of changing stained glass, clear glass windows to stained glass, or even stained glass to stained glass windows, and how it relates to the tracery and to the architecture of the building. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicants before we move to our discussion?
And Sarah, if I can just ask to emphasize even more so that this application is really about the removal of the existing glass. And just, you know, the emphasis is really on whether the existing stained glass can be removed. What goes in its place, as you correctly noted, is we have much more generalized appropriateness concerns on that report.
All right, and if commissioners, if you have any final questions, please raise your hand. Okay. So not seeing any final questions, I think we should move to our discussion. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
All right. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. So let's start our discussion and...
Sarah, can you ask for all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes, hearing is closed, and we're now going to move into our discussion of the application. And I think I'd like to start with Commissioner Holford-Smith. Would you like to start the discussion on this item?
Yes, sure. Well, I think I wanted to thank the applicant for a very thorough presentation and very well-thought-out explanation of what the intent of the project is. Having worked on a number of churches and understanding this, the type of glass that was installed in this east window as sort of a temporary, in a way, glass that the church would aspire to replace at some time with a donor type of glass. I think that the removal of the existing quarry glass, which is also not original, is appropriate. And I think that their choice of artwork, and I appreciate the testimony advocating for an American stained glass artist, but I don't think that's within our purview. I think that what they have selected is appropriate for Trinity. I'm going to approve the application.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, this is really interesting to me. And as it pertains to sort of to the removal of the existing fabric and replacement of new stained glass, what's interesting about that is that the real stained glass craftsmanship is perhaps more than any other craft, incredibly unchanged since, let's say, medieval period. The craft itself of making stained glass, the stained glass is blown, and then it's cut and laid flat. The color is two-sided material on that blown and flattened, laid flattened glass. And so it has color and clear in the middle and color on the other side. It's quality is all about that, the way that it's fabricated and was fabricated hundreds of years ago. The content, the mineral content of the glass is like it was before. Probably, this red has a lot of gold in it. And it's so fantastic that the new installation will not only recall, but actually be very much like the original fabrication. So I find that very interesting, and it makes it all the more, I think, proper for the old fabric to be taken out and, in fact, replaced with something new. Because it's kind of continuing in that original process. I think it's very exciting and actually very beautiful.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I very much appreciate Commissioner Shamir Baron's comments because, you know, in situations like this, we're often tempted to drift into areas that are not part of our purview, things like the, you know, the subject matter of the story and the source and the artist and all that, which is all interesting, but not really our job. What she focused on is really what our job is here, which is to say, it's appropriate because they're removing nonoriginal glass, and they're replacing it with even a more sympathetic glass. We can focus on things like the jewel tones and the fact that it is storytelling rather than it is the story it tells. And I think that overall... And I think that overall, I know it's hard to say this about Trinity Church, but this new glass actually enhances the individual landmark. And it really is hard to imagine saying that, but I think it does and I think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Oh, I'll just read what I wrote in my notes. Trinity Church seems to be forever evolving. The application has precedence, hence the proposal is beautiful, I think, the stained glass, and it's acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think the project, the glass itself is, forgetting about the content, which is up to the church, is beautiful. And I do also believe it's going to add to this very, very important historical, architectural and community building in the landscape of the city. And it's my understanding even that Trinity's reach is not only local and domestic, but it's also international. So it seems appropriate in terms of, it's their choice to select, but it seems appropriate to elect as broadly as they want.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I agree.
Okay.
This is a beautiful project.
Great. Commissioner Devonshire?
I'm in approval of this. It's nice to see that typically what we're doing is voting on replacing figural glass because a church has been turned into condominiums and they don't want to see the figural material. I am, because we have a lot of church clients, I'm always somewhat distressed when I see non-figural glass because it means that they haven't been able to get enough donors to donate the funds for figural glass. So I'm quite pleased to see this. Also irrelevant to this argument, but with regard to choosing a foreign artist, this was originally the Anglican Church. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, I totally agree that the removal of the glass is appropriate and that the installation of this glass, which seems to be done with extraordinary care, is appropriate. My only concern that I would ask them to work with the staff on is if you look at page 11, LPC 11, what you really see is the texture of the panes themselves and the reinforcing bars. And that's going to be very much different in the new scheme because of the outer protective pane of glass. I would just ask them to work with staff to make sure that that outer pane of glass, which is going to be in a slightly more proud position than the current pane, which will have, I would assume, not the same level of articulation, that that be non-reflective so that you get to really experience that texture as much as possible and not really. I've seen a lot of these situations where the protective glass is put in and you really lose some sense of scale and texture. And it's necessary, you have to have it. But we should try to, in such a careful job, make sure that the outer protective layer is not obscuring the fine work that it protects.
Yes, I agree. And we actually, we are often reviewing applications to do protective glazing and we have standards for that. So we'll make sure that that applies in this case and that the standards are applied and it's non-reflective to the extent possible. Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with my colleagues. And I do think that this is very appropriate for church architecture and for this particular church. And for the, and also the theme replacement is totally appropriate in this case. Just want to state that, of course, there are wonderful American stained glass producers and we all appreciate them a great deal, but that is not the subject of this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think we have consensus to approve. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you read that motion?
Of course. Sorry, I need to go back to the. Okay. So sorry. In the matter of LPC 200996175 Broadway Trinity Church and Graveyard Individual Landmark, a Gothic revival-style church designed by Richard Upjohn, sorry, and built in 1846, the application's to replace a window. I recommend approval. Finding that the existing colored glass diamond pane or quarry glass window dates to the 1960s is severely deteriorated and does not match the camembert proportions of the church's original quarry glass windows dating from the 19th century. The historic precedent exists in this and other 19th century churches for original quarry glass windows to be replaced with stained glass memorial or commemorative windows once a donor has been found. The Trinity Church has a history of new and contemporary stained glass designs being installed with major building campaigns and therefore the work is in keeping with this tradition, that the jewel tone colors are in keeping with the existing historic stained glass windows, that the irregular horizontal framing panels lines are typical of some historic figurative windows and that the proposed work will involve replacement of the glazing only, retaining and restoring historic masonry tracery.
Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. And Lisa, will you call the vote?
Rich is.
Yeah, I think I can actually.
Are you back? Okay, great. Thank you, Rich.
Kelly Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Bland is recused, I apologize. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, intended in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved and we look forward to seeing that move ahead. Thank you. So we'll move to the next item now.
The next item is number four, LPC 20-08201. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 503, lot 7501, 123 Sullivan Street in the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. Arden building designed by Ron Melnud and built in circa 2002. The application is to replace windows.
And commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please state your name for the record and you may begin. And you just need to click on the screen to begin the presentation.
Is the applicant muted?
I've now then moved the slides to another member of the applicant team.
Can you hear us?
And now go forward. Yes, please state your name for the record.
All right, this is Ali Reza Rezavi from Studio Rezavi Architecture, calling from Paris.
Okay, please go ahead with the presentation.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks for having us. We are presenting a, our project on 123 Sullivan. This was, this building was designed, I believe, in 2000 and completed between 01 and 02. This was built by the previous owner who had purchased two separate lots, demolished the buildings to put this one up. And so it was built, obviously, with trying to mimic historic Soho architectural features. And our client has been the owner of one of the top floor, the floor with the arch for the past 20 years. And he just recently purchased the top floor and has asked us to create a duplex on these top two floors. So we looked at the original drawings for this building, the way it was filed. I'm trying to move to the next slide.
I'm just revising the control back to the original applicant. So just one moment, please.
Thank you. Yes?
And you can click on the slide to continue.
Okay, great. So just, oh, sorry. Let me just go back. So like I said, we're on Sullivan Street, just south of Prince Street. This is classified as a non-contributing building. I'll move quickly. These three elevations show on the left side the original DOB-approved elevation, the existing conditions in the center and the proposed design on the right side. Essentially, what's been done is that unlike what the original design showed with very thin mullions for the arched window and some sort of a very, you know, light design for a guardrail, what was added was a more decorative sort of Art Nouveau-type decorative railing with very heavy and thick window mullions. In addition, what's more difficult to see here is that two window mount air conditioning units have been installed on either side of the arch, so further reducing the amount of natural light that comes to the apartment. And so our approach on this building was to essentially celebrate the one main architectural feature, which is the arch. And the way we wanted to do that was essentially by removing all this interference, as we call it, to just underline the brick arch. This is just to zoom on the three options. These are just some typical detailing that was required of us on this. And these are, these are the two final pictures showing on the left side the existing condition and on the right side the proposed. What we're also proposing is a change to the top floor windows because, like I said before, this is going to become a duplex apartment. So these double sash windows on the top floor will no longer be accessible for maintenance because they will be in the double height space. So in sort of a continuation of the picture frame window below, we're just suggesting that these be replaced with single glass. And that's about it. I'm sorry, just one last thing. The one reason we are suggesting to remove the guardrail as well is because there is really no space outside to go to. So one of our guesses is that this sort of Art Nouveau balustrade was added to conceal the two window mount units that you can see on either side of the arch. So it just feels that by removing that, we get a much more gracious and elegant facade to the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Please raise your hands. You have any questions? All right, not seeing any questions, we'll move to public testimony. Lisa, do we have anyone here to speak?
Yes, we have two people signed up. We'll start with Kelly Carroll. And Kelly, I am unmuting you.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. Despite this building's designation as non-contributing, it does not mean that future alterations should sully its appearance and connectivity to the historic district. The proposed changes to the fifth and sixth stories move this building away from its design facade and its streetscape context. Every window on this building has a divided configuration. As proposed, the fenestration will create a departure in uniformity, a condition that the LPC actively tries to prevent when regulating windows. The divisions of glazing in the fifth floor window relate directly to the thin masonry piers on the lower floors and break up the massing of this large opening. Their elimination will sever this relationship. The attractive ironwork that screens the fifth floor window is a welcome presence on Sullivan Street and it is in dialogue with the fire escapes of surrounding historic buildings. While it may no longer function as a balcony, nothing is gained aesthetically from the ironworks removal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And we also had Sarah Bean-Atman sign up. Okay, Sarah, I'm unmuting you. If you could state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Sarah Bean-Atman, Village Preservation. 123 Sullivan Street was built in 2002, a number of years before the designation of the Sullivan Thompson Historic District in 2016. But clearly, its design was executed with its context in mind and is respectful of and relates well to its historic surroundings. Provided that the spiral stairs are in fact not visible, then we have no objection to that part of the proposal. However, Village Preservation feels that the replacement of the double pane windows with single pane windows in the facade is an unnecessary and unhelpful step backwards in the contextual design of this building, which would make this building less appropriate within the Sullivan Thompson District. Additionally, the divided window and ironwork covering the arched opening should not be removed. We therefore ask the commission not to approve the proposed new windows. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. And I don't see anybody else with their hand raised and that those are all the people that signed up.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have a resolution from the community board or other written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Community Board to recommend denial.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to turn to the applicants and see if you would like to respond to the comments that were made about the single pane glass, the relationship of the single pane glass to the historic district.
Sure. Let me point out that the vertical brick lines that was, that were pointed out by the first person are non-structural. So this is essentially a full pastiche of a historic building. This is a steel and concrete structure. So the relationship you speak of, to me, is nonexistent as an architect. And I was previously trained as a structural engineer as well. Second, the steel balustrade, I'm not sure how that relates to the New York fire escapes. New York fire escapes, as far as I know, were added on later to the building and none of them, to my knowledge, and specifically in this neighborhood, have any kind of art deco features to them. But essentially, what I think I would like to point out is that the reason why we're removing these, we wish to remove the existing mullions is that they date back from the early 2000s. They're essentially non-performing window profiles. But by removing them, we're essentially underlining the lightness of an arch. The structural function of an arch is to span from point A to point B without any help. And the original, so to speak, design does not do that. As a matter of fact, the DOB-approved drawings are closer to what we're showing, I think, to what was built in the 90s. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions for the applicant before we move to our discussion? Okay, and not seeing any hands raised. I'm going to suggest that we make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm not.
And. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I so second.
Okay, all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll move to our discussion. And, you know, as the applicant presented and as was stated in testimony, this building is identified as non-contributing to this Historic District. It is contextual in its general composition size and materiality. The windows in question are different than the other windows on the facade. So I'm not sure that not, that not matching the rest of the fenestration is at odds with the architecture of this particular building or the district. But we should talk about the level of articulation as it relates to the Historic District. And so I think, why don't we start? This time, I'm going to start on the other side with Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Sure. You know, I happen to agree that although this building is not deemed to be historic architecturally significant, it definitely is contextually, it works within the context of the, of the street and the neighborhood. And I appreciate what the applicant is saying, but I have to say, in looking at what's being proposed, that I feel like it loses a little texture that makes the building more cohesive. So I would recommend that, number one, I think the top vertical window should be one over ones. And I think in terms of the, actually, I like the railing. I think it adds some character and I would like to keep it. But if, if it, but you know, if the other commissioners don't agree, I would, at a minimum, have the vertical mullions here again to better integrate and connect the whole facade of the building.
Okay, and Commissioner Bland?
I, I think this is a very contextual but anemic building. And it's kind of a weak, a weak building in all of its gestures to be contextual. I think what the proposal is suggesting makes the building stronger. And I like it considerably better, even if it's at odds as the chair just admitted, that the windows without mullions would be different from the other windows in the building. I don't find that that to be an overwhelmingly negative problem here. I think the building is simply stronger with the proposal that's being suggested.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Oops. Can you speak?
No, I agree with the Commissioner Brand, but I do also see the point of some of the testimonies, especially on the top floor, there seems to be the horizontal mullion is, is, seems to have, you know, if it's placed there even, it will be consistent with the top floor facade.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire?
I'm more in agreement with Gene on this. I think that the, it is now a contributing building because of its contextuality. I think that removing everything from the arch actually weakens the design and leaves us with a gaping hole. So if they wish to have a single sheet of glass back there, it needs to be behind the retained balustrade. I also think that the, the top floor windows should be one over ones.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, interesting conversation. I think it's always hardest to figure out what to do with buildings like this that are kind of neither here nor there. I think that I'm okay with the large pane of glass in the arch. But I think that, and I'm okay with the removal of the railing, but I think something should go back there that has a level of detail that's commensurate with it, because I think what you're doing in, in removing the mullions as they're proposing and the railings is you are really stripping out what little fine-grained articulation there is on this, on this poor thing. And I think that if you're going to go with something that's more open in terms of the glass, you have to somehow compensate for that by not having the building look even more poverty-stricken than it started out as. So I don't think we should hold fast to that particular railing or that particular arrangement of mullions. But I think we should insist on, on the overall quality of it being no worse than what it started at.
Okay, and do you have a particular feeling about the top floor windows?
I, it's the same thing. I really think that what's proposed is not historically inappropriate for this building. I could probably think of examples of different fenestrations in central days of buildings of this general type in the historic backlog. But I think that the overall effect is one more reduction in texture on a building that needs all the texture it can get.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
This is somewhat difficult because we're, I think that the, actually, it's to some extent moving, it's moving in a better direction as Commissioner Bland said, I believe. I do not think that there should be a retention of that ornate balcony that was added later on, which no longer has any utility and also is, is, is an addition to a building that was built very recently. I don't think the original design of that arched window area was, was, you know, a good design for the building. I think that the upper windows actually do seem to be to possibly, you know, add, at least that if there'd be, that there should be some horizontal mullion. And it's hard for me, I'm trying to imagine if, once you put in the horizontals on the upper story, whether you really need vertical mullions on the, the arched window. But they, if there are, you know, you could have some vertical divisions that were not as heavy as those in the second iteration of this building, perhaps. So I'm, my initial reaction was, as I said like that of Commissioner Bland, but I'm sort of leaning to some kind of horizontal division on the upper story and then, sorry about that.
So, so some level of articulation.
Yeah. I think both the upper and the, and then the middle, the arched window. And I definitely think the, that ornate, you know, structure should be removed. I don't think that's appropriate to the building, the district or, you know, doesn't, it, it doesn't really have any, it's just something that got added and very, very recently.
Okay, Commissioner Holford-Smith?
I'm, looking at this, I'm thinking of the way we approach some other buildings that are in historic districts that may or may not be contributing, but we sort of look at the overall design and determine whether the existing architecture can support a simplification of the windows. And I think has been stated earlier that this building really can't support that. And I think removing that texture actually diminishes the architecture of the building. So I think that we require some kind of a horizontal division. It doesn't have to be an actual double hung, one over one, but maybe just a horizontal division in a fixed light. And I think that that existing rail actually adds quite a lot to the building, which is why it's very sort of nondescript. And I would advocate if they kept the railing, then perhaps the single sheet of glass behind it would be all right. But otherwise, I would, I think that we need some division in that arch to give it, you know, to maintain the texture that the existing building has.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Thank you. I am in agreement with Commissioner Bland. I don't think that these details, features did much for the building in the first place to either make it be more contributing or historic or whatever. So I think it's actually, it, it's beneficial to remove, as they've proposed and for the reasons that they've proposed, both the, the mullions as well as the ornamental balcony rail. And I think that they're moving it towards something that at least is cleaned up and sort of stronger in its own right. So I would, I find it acceptable and approvable as they've proposed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I, I think I agree with Commissioner Holford-Smith.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm always amazed of the power of symmetry. When you look at, at the left-hand side and the right-hand side, how by removing the railing and having one piece of glass changes the whole thing. It just becomes a big opening there. So my proposal is that on the upper floor, we keep the horizontal, the one over one. And to ameliorate this proportional change in the arch, I would think we should put vertical mullions and just to tie the composition closer together. So those are my two suggestions.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is an interesting discussion. And I think that while we have two who are supportive as is, I think most other commissioners have some concerns about both floors. And I, and, and while we've suggested various options, I think that the, the real essence of these comments is that the, the both floors lack articulation and texture that would be found in buildings in, in this Historic District. So I think we could make a motion to approve it with the modification that at the top floor, they retain a horizontal member that would either be derived from a one over one or look like a one over one and that at the arched window, that they provide some level of articulation through mullions and/or a new balcony. So I think I'll go ahead and make that motion and then we'll take a vote and see where we land on that. Okay, so in, okay, in the matter of docket number LPC 2008201, 123 Sullivan Street and the Sullivan Thompson Historic District, an apartment building designed by Ron Melamud and built circa 2002. This is an application to replace windows. And I note that this building is not one for which the Sullivan Thompson Historic District was designated. I recommend approval with modifications that the building was constructed circa 2002 and therefore will not eliminate any historic, the proposal will not eliminate any historic fabric, that the existing windows to be replaced do not match the building's fenestration in terms of proportions, materials and detail, details. And therefore, the proposed work will not detract from a unified fenestration pattern. That the, that a proposal that retains existing vertical mullions and some level of articulation could maintain the rhythm of the fenestration. And that the proposed arch-headed single light window at the fifth floor balcony will remain set back deep within the masonry opening, allowing for, to be a discreet location that allows for some textural quality to be added. And that a revised proposal will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. However, I find that the proposal as presented eliminates too much articulation from the window openings at these two floors. And therefore, I recommend that a horizontal element be installed at the top floor windows and that either main mullions to, at the arch window be incorporated into the design or new, and/or new ironwork to provide a level of articulation at that deeply set window. Okay, and Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Jerick Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Lutfi? Yeah, I'm you.
Aye, sorry about that.
It's all right. And Commissioner Holford-Smith?
Aye.
Okay, eleven in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications to be worked out in consultation with the staff. And we'll move to the next item.
Right, and this should be the last item before lunch break. It's item number five, LPC 20-04746, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in a borough of Manhattan, block 1211, lot 155, 164 West 81st Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. A Renaissance Revival-style row house designed by D&amp;J Jardine and built in 1882 to 1883. The application is to construct a rear yard addition.
And the applicants have joined the hearing. And I'll be giving them control of the presentation. And please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Hi, I'm Susanna Simon-Pietri from Changon Co. And I think we're waiting for the other people. They were here, but I think that they might be off.
Yeah, I'm here, Mary Dirix. I'm, and do I have control, Edith?
Yes, yes, you do, Mary.
Okay.
And lastly, I'm Magley Gore, I'm also with Changon Co.
Okay, Mary Dirix, preservation consultant from the project. And as you heard, with me is Susanna Simon-Pietri of Changon Co. And Magley Gore, project architect of Changon Co. This is 1882 to 3, a row house built by D&amp;J Jardine Architects. This is one of a row of two. It was originally a row of four. And these, for some reason, are the surviving middle two. Here they are in 1940, before the stoop was removed on, on our building. Here's the building today in the front. Most, this public hearing is about the rear addition. I did want to say, though, that other parts of the project that are not part of the public hearing are replication of the front stoop, exterior repairs and window replacement. I'm moving now to the rear. This is the rear. The rear, or the houses are flanked by 20th century apartment buildings, which extend deeply into the rear yards. In addition, that's either side to side and this is, well, that side to side. The other was front and rear. In the back, there's a row of flats on the next block. Here, side to side, these are the two deep apartment buildings. The brick on the, on the facade, for some reason, is very damaged, either with really aggressive sandblasting or something else. Here's the block. There are a lot of additions on the, on the block, including ones that are three-story and, and four-story. And here's a aerial view showing the block with the many deep buildings and the many additions. Suzanne is going to take over.
Sure. So we're, this is showing what we are, do I have control actually of this? Or do I need to tell Mary to slide?
If you wish to switch control, I am able to do that for you. Just one moment.
I'll just start explaining this. So this is a rendering that we did of the facade, of the back facade. And what we are proposing to do here is to extend And what we are proposing to do here is to extend the basement floor by 16 foot six and the next two floors above that, so the parlor on the second floor, an addition of seven foot five from the existing wall right now. And we would be inserting glass and steel panels for the bottom two floors and then replacing windows on the other floors above that. Sorry, how do I?
You can just use your mouse to click on the screen and then you can advance the slides using the mouse or your arrow keys.
All right, so here's a 3D view showing existing conditions and the proposed addition. So again, the first floor would come out 16 foot six. I mean, talking about the basement floor and then the next two floors up would come out seven foot seven from the existing property. And we are maintaining a 30-foot setback from the property line on the back for the bottom addition, which is the deepest one. This just shows the condition of our property next to the other ones as is existing. And the next one shows the proposed. In terms of materials, what we're proposing is basically to save all the masonry that's possible within the removal of the back facade. And to use what we are able to salvage to rebuild the top floor and match all the brick in addition. So it's basically keeping the same materials that we have right now, except the new addition of the steel and glass enclosures. So again, existing facade and new facade. And then this is an existing conditions, long, long between denal section and a cross-section. So you can see here what the conditions are of the building that is directly next to us. And the, this is a proposed section of the property. So you can see here how much it would actually come out on the first floor and what the relationship of that is to the building right next to us. And addition of the top two floors. We are also proposing to use, I think the next one shows that, yeah. So the, we're not adding anything to the existing roof, except for the condensing units of the HVAC system. And we are proposing to put them in the rear of the property along with all the donage necessary so that nothing is visible from the exterior front of the property. And nothing is actually visible either from the back, because there's no way of looking in from the next street over. And then we go into floor plans, which I'll sort of move through a little quickly here, unless anybody wants to discuss them.
Now, you can go through the floor plans quickly.
And then that's our last page. So this is our idea of what the front is going to be looking like once we, the stoop back on there and then the rear of the property.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? All right, not seeing any question, any hands raised for questions? I think we'll move to see if we have any public testimony. So any members of the public who wish to comment on this application, if you're in the meeting, please raise your hand using the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And that way we'll be able to identify you and, and call you in to speak. Okay, Lisa.
Okay, great. We have Community Board seven Chair Mark Diller, who signed up to speak. And Mark, I'm gonna mute you. If you can state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Mark Diller. I'm the Chair of Community Board seven. And we're happy to recommend approval of this project with a commanding vote of thirty to zero with one abstention. While it's not a part of the application before you, we are grateful to the applicant for the efforts on the front facade, especially the restoration of the stoop, which will restore symmetry and original historic fabric. With respect to the rear yard addition, we were particularly moved by the proportion of masonry to the glazing effects. We were also cognizant of the, the divisions within the large panes of glass and that break up the, the massing of the glazing. We're also appreciative of the relatively modest scale of the rear yard addition in that it only covers the first couple of floors below and retains the punched windows, the lintels, the historic fabric that is both on the same plane as the building next door and then actually replicates that on the first level of rear yard extension. And so for all of those reasons, we found the, the application to be a good example of the type of, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was not on video, a good example of the type of rear yard additions that are routinely found to be appropriate in this historic district and therefore we recommend approval.
Great, thank you, Mark. And I don't see any other hand raised. And so I think that's it.
Okay, and Rich, do we have any other written comments?
We do. We have a letter of approval or rather a letter in support from my request.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now I'd like to turn back to the applicant. I think it was fairly supportive testimony. But is there any, are there any final comments you'd like to make before we move into our discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay, and commissioners, any final questions? Okay, not seeing any questions. I think we'll move into our discussions and we'll make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion?
So moved.
And Commissioner Letfy, would you second that motion? Okay, and all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed and we'll move into our discussion now. So this is, you know, the remainder of two row houses on this block, which has, have been largely surrounded by larger apartment buildings of the 20th century with much bigger footprints. And so it's for a non-visible three-story addition that retains the top floor and pushes out about seven foot seven, I believe, at the parlor and second floor and a little bit further, maybe at the basement level. So who would, let me see, why don't we start this one with Commissioner Gustafson?
Okay. Quote Jonathan Swift, "It's a modest proposal. It's appropriate in every way." I think the massing is limited, the, the, the design is simple, though it does no damage to the building. I think it's perfectly fine as is.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree. I find it acceptable.
Okay, Commissioner Letfy.
Completely agree, and thank you for reusing those bricks.
Commissioner Bland.
I agree too. Nice time.
Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Devonshire.
That sounds like him.
I actually, we may have lost him. Let's move to Commissioner Goldblum.
I hope it, I hope it's not as, as various as Swift's.
Not so modest.
But yeah, I think it's an unironically modest proposal and is totally appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin.
I agree that it's a totally appropriate proposal as presented.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
I agree.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I agree as well.
Okay, so I think we're all in support. Commissioner Gustafson, would you make that motion?
Sure. In the matter of LPC 2004746, 164 West 81st Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, a Renaissance Revival style row house designed by D&amp;J Jardine and built in 1882 to 83. Application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from public thoroughfares, that this row house is one of two remaining from an original row of four within a block comprised mostly of large apartment buildings and tenements, and that the proposed addition will not project beyond any buildings on the block other than the adjacent row house or diminish a cohesive central green space. But the design and fenestration of the addition, featuring brick cladding, multi-light metal and glass window and door assemblies and metal railings will be in keeping with the scale and character of a row house. That the brick facade and historic brick corbeling at the top roof, top floor will be reconstructed in con, maintaining the building's relationship with the adjacent building and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building and the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes, Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire. Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved and we're gonna now break for lunch. We'll come back at 12:45. During the lunch break, we will stop the YouTube recording. And I'd like to ask all the attendees from the public, including applicants for future items and members of the public who are, wish to participate in those hearing items, to leave the meeting and then rejoin at 12:45. And if you're watching the proceedings only on YouTube, just remember to go back to the original live video on the LPC homepage and restart the video so that you're, you enter at the right time. So we'll see everybody at 12:45. Commissioners, just turn your cameras, your video off and your volume off. And we'll see everyone at 12:45. Thank you.